I'm in, almost six-tenth of a Florida beach.
Yes.
The year.
Good morning.
Hi, everybody. Happy New Year, good evening. I'd like to call the order. A regular city council meeting, the City of Satellite Beach, January 3rd, 2018, approximately 7:00 PM. Please join Councilman Osmer for a moment of silence and the pledge.
Can you show me a moment of silence, please?
And the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every equal justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, open up the floor for citizens' comments. This is for non-agenda items. The floor is open. Hearing no citizens' comments, move back to city council comments.
I would just like to probably echo what a lot of people were talking about is, you know, all things we did in December, the open house at the fire station, well-received, great crowd, the Santa, the Jingle Bell Run. I mean, you saw a lot of people from the community out there, a lot of people enjoying themselves. I think the city and the staff, everybody does a great job of pulling those things together. Wherever you went, wherever I went, talking to people, everybody seemed very excited about all those things that we did. So, you know, good hurrah for all those folks that did put all that together. That's all.
The only thing I have is, and actually it was Dominic that kind of teed this up for me, but I've got a Community for a Lifetime presentation, a healthcare wellness presentation in the Atlantic on Saturday, the 13th. Just kind of following up on all the stuff we've been working on and all that sort of thing, so that's all.
Great, thank you.
Okay. I'll take a good one down the line. Just, Christmas was great. We did the Jingle Bell Two-Miler, and I'm just gonna toot my daughter's horn, she got first place in her age group, and I got seventh, but still. I love that we had that race, and just so you guys know, the Running Zone Race Series, the Jingle Bell Two-Miler is part of that series, and it is the most-attended race that they have, other than the Space Coast Marathon and Half-Marathon. So, it's just that good of a race, we want to keep pumping that up. But other than that, Happy New Year, looking forward to good things in the upcoming year.
I just want to echo some of the comments here, but I also want to bring out the employee luncheon. That was a great, great luncheon for employees at Christmas, and I'm sorry that you were taken advantage of, but Jeff did a good job. The other thing I want to do is, I want to thank council for, I wasn't here at the first meeting in December when you all appointed me as Vice Mayor, so I want to thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Your vote of confidence.
Being a gun, you know, gone another time.
I'll make sure I don't misconsege it. But I do know that I really appreciate, you know, the latitude that you all give me for the other things that I do with the League of Cities and the Space Coast League of Cities, and I really do appreciate it because it's important for us to be involved, and I thank you for letting me do it.
Thank you.
You do a great job out there representing not only the city, but the county, so thank you. I saw you on Facebook the other day, too, in the little video, and it was really good.
Oh, thanks, yeah.
Okay. I also attended the open house at the Fire Department, and it was great. And I also attended the police, the volunteer luncheon, and it's pretty interesting, when they add up all the hours, I gotta say, pretty amazing program. A program that probably saves the city in excess of $150,000, and the hours that the people put out, and really the fun that they have doing it. It's a really great group, close-knit group there, and Linda and that whole department does a really great job on it, so I just wanted to mention them. And, good evening, everybody. Moving on, any other council comments?
I just want to, I don't know if anybody noticed, Doug Butler, the track and cross-country coach from Satellite, he was recognized, I guess they had a program, I didn't realize this, for the SPCA when the hurricane was coming, and they needed foster parents to basically take all their animals in, and Doug Butler I saw was highlighted in one of the local papers, that he went and took in a couple dogs during the storm. I guess they end up getting all the animals, were fostered throughout the hurricane, and I think afterwards, actually, six of them found permanent homes. But I thought it was nice that Doug Butler, our, you know, Satellite Beach guy, was recognized, right? They had a picture of him and the dogs and stuff on it, so I thought that was really great.
Great, thank you. Courtney, one other question, and I could say during your report now, since this is council. How's the track coming? And...
I don't know, we've sent our money over, and they have all the funds. I think it went out to bid, like, the day we sent everything in, so...
My understanding is that it will be completed by the beginning of track season.
Okay.
They were, they were calling us incessantly to get the payment, so they were obviously ready to go.
Right. Yeah, and then I saw, you know, something on that, so, okay, thank you very much. Any further city council comments? Hearing none, move on to Agenda Item 5, City Manager's Report. Courtney?
Thank you, Mayor. On January 6th, from 6:30 to 9:30, Satellite Beach Powell will have their next Teeny Bopper Night for K through 6 graders. And on January 25th, at 6:00 PM, the city will host a sustainability workshop to educate the public about stormwater, bioswales, and the DeSoto Parkway Stormwater Enhancement Project, funded in part by a grant from the IRL National Estuary Program, and this workshop will be held here in the city council hall, council chambers. I have two events to add to that. We also are holding a sustainability summit on February 8th with every other sustainability board in Brevard County, and that will be held at the Civic Center at 6:00 PM. At 5:00 PM, we're having a pre-summit workshop where FIT will be presenting to interested parties on how to create a sustainability plan. And then at 6 o'clock, we're gonna start the summit. Each board will present what they've done so far, and then we will have a presentation by Brevard Zoo, and then we're going to have a keynote speaker, which is Chris Castro from the City of Orlando, and their sustainability director over there, and he's gonna come in and speak for 30 minutes on what they're doing over there.
Orlando's?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
February 8th at 6:00.
And then we also, if you haven't, let us know if you want to go to the Florida League of Cities action days, Legislative Action Days, is January 29th through 31st. I believe I have myself, Dominic, and Mindy all going, so if anybody else wants to go to that, let me know.
Did you all get, have you got hotel rooms yet?
I think she's already scheduled all that, yeah.
Good. Because the Doubletree's already filled.
And we might not be in that already.
Well, I'm there one night, but I couldn't get the first night, so I'm somewhere else the first night.
The Satellite Beach Library is currently closed for renovations and will be reopened after January 16th. We've received a thank you note from the Ruth family, expressing their appreciation for the Fire Department Open House event, and we also received another thank you note from Stuart Mapes regarding the thoughtful and courteous work provided by the Public Works team when they were working on a stormwater project on Lemon Street. We are having a lot of difficulty hiring staff in Public Works because of our salary, and we know it's from our, we know it's our salary largely because they're telling us it's our salary, so we're getting people, we actually had hired one person, he just walked away today, because he could make some money, better money somewhere else, so we are recommending that we conduct a wage study on the Public Works Department, and that study will cost $4,200, and we have this available already in our General Government Services. When we were going through that skipper work and looking at the tiers of the pay scale and how that would apply to other departments, we realized that we're gonna run into a problem there, and that we really needed to expand the pay study citywide. So we will be bringing that back to you as an agenda item at your next meeting, because that's obviously more expensive, and we, you know, it's beyond our budget requirements, and we believe we have the money budgeted, but we'll let you know where that's coming from when we have that agenda item. So, if you think it's weird that we were just doing Public Works, we realize it was, so we're gonna expand that. We are gonna be adding a part-time staff assistant to provide front desk phone coverage at the DRS Community Center, and this will be funded using existing budgeted dollars in the part-time wages line item, so we have that funded already, but if you've ever called the Rec Department and get a busy signal or no answer in the answering machine, that's the problem that we're trying to solve. In recent years, we've started, we used to do your goal setting at this meeting, but we realized that it's difficult for us to wrap that into the budget because it's not tied with the budget, so we'd rather do that in March, if that's possible, so we can work that into our budget. So, we're recommending to start goal setting in March and have that feed into our budget guidelines, along with the staff's goals, so if that's okay with you, we recommend doing that.
Question on everybody? If we're gonna do that, I know sometimes that takes some time, maybe if we look at March and if we have a, put that on one of the dates that we might have a lighter agenda, and that way we could carry on a pretty good conversation on different things.
And that is all I have.
Thank you. Questions for? Thank you, Courtney, appreciate it. Moving on to Agenda Item 6, Discuss Take Action on Ordinance 1150. Jim?
Ordinance number 1150, in ordinance of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending section 30-510, sub-C, sub-7, Satellite Beach City Code, to allow accessory structures to be secured/tied down by any means authorized by the Florida Building Code, if such means are certified by an engineer or architect licensed by the state of Florida, to meet all requirements of Florida Building Code, providing severability, providing an effective date. It's the first reading of ordinance number 1150.
Thank you. Stan?
Carl?
Yes. Thank you. Questions?
I do. I sat at the meeting the other night when you were discussing this. So, basically what they're saying is, there's a lot of ways they can tie it down, as long as the tie-down meets.
The Florida Building Code.
The codes.
Right.
Whether it's on concrete or not, is basically what...
The reason why we kind of brought this up is that we were forcing people to add a concrete pad or something that could already be tied down by other means that were approved by the Florida Building Code and a design professional, and it seemed like a waste of time for them and money, and it was more expensive to try for variants than it would be to for the concrete pad, so we just, we found it just a good idea.
Great, okay. Thank you. Further questions?
I would, I would just say is, you know, be a sustainable community, the last thing we really want to do is make everybody pour concrete.
Correct.
You know, that doesn't, that kind of goes against what we keep trying to do, is, you know, we don't want to pour any more concrete than we have to.
Just one.
So, I mean, that, to me, makes sense from that point of view.
The code originally was totally weak, it just said it had to be attached to a concrete slab. We weren't saying how it had to be attached to a concrete slab. The idea that it was so it doesn't blow away, but there are other methods to do that, and that's one of the things that led us to this point.
Great. Thank you very much.
Motion to approve ordinance number 1150 on first reading.
Second? I have a motion by Councilman Breimer, second by Councilman Osmer. At this time, open up the Agenda Item 6 for public comment. Hearing no public comment, bring it back to the council. Any further counsel?
I'd probably be getting a shed a little sooner now.
Okay.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Breimer?
Yes.
Council Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Osmer?
Yes.
And Mayor Catina?
Yes, motion passes. Thanks, Carl. Moving on to Agenda Item 7, Discuss Take Action on Ordinance 1151. Jim?
Ordinance number 1151, in ordinance of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, vacating and abandoning the north five feet of the south 10 feet of the public utility easement running parallel to the south property line of Lot 11, Block C, Amherst Gardens, Section 5, Unit 2, as recorded in Plat Book 25, Page 117, public records of Brevard County, Florida, 529 West Amherst Circle, as described herein, providing for severability, conflicts, recording, and an effective date. It's the first reading of ordinance number 1151.
Thank you. Carl?
This is kind of a odyssey of mistakes, I guess, like you're saying. The people bought this, the house with the swimming pool encroaching .4 feet into an easement. They got a vacation of that easement, and then they got permitted a pool deck and a screening enclosure now four and a half feet into the easement. So they bought this all like this, all before they were even involved in the home, and they wanted just to be able to utilize the rest of that five-foot easement along that line, because they have something, not all the way in easement, but partially in easement, and they want to utilize the rest of it. It was no fault of theirs, and it seems pretty easy. We have no objection from any until the award of the Public Works.
Thank you. Questions from council?
I can, I was at that meeting, too, and it's, we've had this, I think, many times. It's in there, yeah.
That's what I was gonna say, I don't have any questions, but, I mean, these issues have been coming up for years, you know, that I've been involved in the city, so, yeah, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 1151 on first reading.
Second? I have a motion by Vice Mayor Montanaro, second by Councilman Osmer. At this time, I'll open up for public comment on Agenda Item 7. Hearing no public comment, back to council. Council comments? Grace?
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Catina?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Number 8, Discuss Take Action on Purchase the Fire Bunker Gear.
Thank you, Mayor. The staff is asking to, for you to waive the bid process to purchase fire bunker gear under the Lake County, Florida contract, 17-0606, in the amount of $31,864.64. We do have this budgeted in the capital assets fund for $40,000, and this would basically purchase 16 sets of bunker gear from Bennett Fire Products Company, Inc., under pricing included in the Lake County, Florida contract, and if you look through that quote, it's a no-brainer to go with that contract. If we bid it out, we probably, there's no chance that we'd get that price, so, staff is recommending approval of waiving the bid process in the amount of $31,864.64.
Want to put questions, because then this is great, I looked at, do we have bunker gear, and it's dated where we have to...
It's definitely time to change that out.
So make sure. Any questions from council? At this time, I'll open up Agenda Item 8 for public comment. Hearing no public comment, back to council.
I'll make a motion to authorize the waiver of the bid process to purchase Florida fire bunker gear under the Lake County, Florida contract, 17-0606, in the amount of $31,864-64.
Second? I have a motion by Vice Mayor Montanaro, second by Councilman Osmer. Further discussion from council? Hearing none. Grace?
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Catina?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you, Courtney. Moving on to Agenda Item 9, Discuss Take Action on the Evaluation of Backyard Chicken Pilot Program.
This came in apparently loudly, but it's been very quiet since. We've had basically six permits in the last year and a half, we had three in '16, three in '17, we've had five complaints, is all. Two were not even in the city limits, so we could do nothing. We had two roosters that were unfounded, and then we had some chickens get loose after Burma, and they were permitted afterwards, so, we've had very, we had no complaints, and people have complied with what they needed to do.
Thank you. Comments from council?
No, no idea. I hold one of those permits. Hold on, I do have one question on if this is the time or the place for that, in the ordinance. Is it the time to go over the, something I think needs to change in the ordinance or be removed, totally, to be honest?
Yes, but I want to clarify that the way this ordinance was written was that after, basically, right now, we require a permit, but we can move on to not requiring permits. Am I stating this correctly?
Yeah, they want to change it, yeah.
So that's what we would recommend, is to move over that.
So where in the ordinance are we looking at? What section is it, what number is it, or where is it? It's in paragraph 12, on the bottom of the second page.
So we would have to change the ordinance?
Correct.
Okay.
We don't charge anything for a permit, do we?
No. If we don't charge it, does that just kind of give us a little indication of what's out there?
We don't follow it. Once they get everything ready, we go out there and take a look at what they've done so they comply to the ordinance, and then we just check off on it, and we go from there.
I would, I understand that we haven't had any problems, but I would rather keep the permit process in place, because part of us being able to go out and look at it is to make sure it's not on your neighbor's fence, and that the coop itself was where it needed to be. If we don't have a permit process and we're not going out and looking at it, we don't know where it is, but I don't know whether that would prompt complaints, but, I mean, I think the original intent was to make sure that we were not putting a chicken coop on a fence next to somebody's neighborhood, I mean, so that it was in a spot that was not gonna impact the neighbor, and I thought that was probably why we did it.
We did, but we've noticed that even if the chicken coop was next to the fence, the neighbor very rarely knows. I mean, they're just so quiet, they don't make noise, they don't smell, they don't, they don't have any impacts, so the permit...
I don't have a problem if you want to remove it, I just...
I don't care the way, I just thought it was a good chicken bounce, that you know it was done right.
Yeah, yeah.
And, you know, it was done right, it's where it's supposed to be, and it doesn't come back to haunt us later. I mean, I doubt this thing, I mean, it didn't haunt us before we even had this ordinance, we didn't even know, and it's basically a non-issue, but if it's here, does it give us some ability to make sure it's right? So we don't have a problem. People know they have to build it to this code, I'm not...
Well, it's still in the code, right? And the way our code enforcement kind of works now is that if there's a problem, somebody calls, and then you can go and check it out at that point, right? So why would this be any different?
No, if it's not, well, because without this, you could build it and put it in the wrong location, okay, and you have no ability to check it. We don't.
Perfect example is those two sheds that are sitting on Magnolia, that is the reason why we did the tie-down thing, because now they have to be moved. You know, the permit process allows us to catch stuff like this before we run into the scenario that we're running into there, so I don't know.
I know this has worked really good, and in fact, we get no complaints, we didn't get complaints before. Obviously, when the people did it, they did it right, because we had a process that they knew someone was gonna come out to make sure it was installed properly, so...
I feel that we, there are other chickens out there, but we don't, we don't want to, I mean, I think the thing here is that we don't want to make it too difficult so that people don't come in and get a permit, we don't know that they have chickens at all.
Yeah, I understand that, I mean, I will guarantee you, there's more than six people that have chickens. I'd bet that one pretty quickly.
There are hamsters that have chickens.
Right, but whatever. But my only issue is that I kind of want it to be right, because I don't want to see the problem occur to have a problem, and then people come back and go, you know, "Why aren't you looking? Why did you take it out?"
Mark, you look very determined.
I see where Mindy's coming from. What I would say we do, just to kind of meet a halfway on the whole thing, is do another report in a year from now, see what's going on, and at that time, pull it if we want to pull it. I have to agree, let it go, we've only had this in place for a year. Granted, Carl's saying there's no issues, that sort of thing, but we do have a way to check that one more year, and if it becomes a waste of time, do what Mindy said, take it out, but I'd give another year just to say so that we didn't be too knee-jerk reaction on this too quickly.
I just feel that we don't want to, I don't want to, the whole idea is, the concept of why we wanted chickens, is so people, you have them as pets, they are a food source, they, you know, there's all sorts of, there's a whole movement in the country and the world right now to have these, and I don't want to deter people because, okay, you know what, you have chickens, you do have a coop, but you know what, you didn't do a permit, so now, you know, we're gonna, you're gonna be, do we find them, or do we just...
No, chickens that were losing, chickens that were lost after the hurricane were not permitted, and they got out, and we had a complaint about it, and we went and talked to them, and they said, "Sure, we'll come in and get a permit." And it's a no-fee permit, it's a matter of minutes, and then they're off to work.
Yeah, I mean, I have one, so, I mean, I understand it, but I don't like it.
You have a dog, you have a pet, you have to get two, that didn't deter me from buying a dog. I just want to make sure, you know, we do it right, so it doesn't start becoming an issue.
You don't get for rabbits, or birds, or... That's just my whole thing, like, we...
Did we ever do an article that basically said, you know, you can have chickens now, and, you know, you just have to come in and get a permit, it's no cost, I mean, it lets, you know, maybe we need to just do that again, and put another little book in the next Beachcaster, and say, "The ordinance is still in place, and if you're gonna have chickens, just come in and get a permit."
I do have one change I would like to request on, and it's just something that, when I wasn't on council when this was coming through, I was very strongly standing on the other side of the diocese, you know, stating my opinion, but the one thing that I think should just be taken out, and I'm just gonna say this because I actually, I probably shouldn't say this, so, number five of section 4-13, it says, "A dead backyard chicken shall be immediately removed from the property and disposed of at the Brevard County landfill." Okay? I mean, most of these people, these chickens are their pets, and more than likely, they're gonna want to have a funeral for them. If you have children, bury them in the backyard, maybe do a headstone, I'm not kidding, so telling people they have to dump their chicken in the garbage so it can go to the landfill, I think, is a little...
So in other words, just change the word to dispose of properly.
Yeah, or something, yeah.
And just leave it at that.
Or just remove it.
I mean, the idea of saying dispose of it properly means just don't throw it out in the driveway and let it lay there, right?
Vultures?
I mean, dispose of it properly just means dispose of it properly, whether you want to have a proper burial for it, or whatever, or put it in the garbage can, whatever your choice may be, but I think that covers what you're trying to get at. You just say dispose of it properly, right? We just don't want it laying out.
Very spot on.
I don't want to be breaking rules, because my kids want to have a funeral for a chicken.
Jim? Question? Dispose of properly, is that a...
I mean, I don't, I don't know what there's...
Is there a city or...
Does it matter? What, do we have to tell people what to do with their dead chickens?
I think we need to remove all...
But I just want to make sure it's not anything from a county ordinance on...
Birds, yeah.
Well, the reason I, the reason I say that...
That's what I'm saying, like, why do we... So we could just eliminate that section.
Here would be my concern, I'll just look at this from a, from a pet perspective, when you go out there. First of all, to talk about the permit, what's to keep somebody from getting a dog crate, putting it in the backyard, and throwing four chickens in it? If you don't have a permit process, granted, you would like to believe that most people who are gonna get the chickens would do the right thing, but you know from dog owners and cat owners, people don't always do the right thing. People chain them up to a tree out back, and this happens all the time, it happens in our city, and it happens all over the county. The thing with a permit is, at least going into it, you know they started out the right way, with a coop properly placed, put somewhere. Now, again, if they get their permit, and six months later, you never hear about it again, but you can say that about anything, a guy could, can build an attachment to his house and get everything approved, and then re-change all the wiring and everything else in the house, too, and never have that looked at, but at least going in, again, you know that's done the right thing. I'm saying, for the welfare of chickens, like I said, I don't want to see someone get a dog crate and then throw it in their backyard and throw four chickens in it, and you can't stop that, because you'd never know it was there. Now, granted, you could still do that, but I mean, if you had a, if you have a permit process, like I said, you know at least from animal welfare standpoint, you know going in at least it started out the right way. That's why I would say that. And I think Frank made a good point, is obviously, you know, right, if, I mean, I got cats, you got dogs, stuff like that, you gotta have a permit for it, you gotta renew it every year, I get the hate mail, "If you're late, you don't get it, we're coming after you," and if someone calls, "Your dog gets lost," Animal Control gets a hold of it, "You're gonna get a fine because you don't have your permit," all that stuff happens anyway. So you do, that is, that is common that's here, from that point. I have birds, and yes, I have a license. I have birds, and yes, I have a license. I have a license from the state of Florida for having birds.
They're exotic, right?
But just the fact that I have more than one pet bird, and I have, so I do that, and every year it costs me fifty, fifty dollars to have a permit, to have those. Our permit's free, and we've only given out six. I don't see where that's kind of time-consuming on staff. I don't see where it's bundling up our system if we've only given out six permits in almost seventeen months, from that point of view. I kind of agree with, with Mark from the point that we go for another year and just see if it gets any better, any worse. And the only thing I would say about, when I say about properly is, there are rules. If your pet dog dies, you can't let them lay in the driveway. You can't lay them in the front yard and let it lay out there, and let the vultures and the vermin and the rats come get that. You can't do that. You know, you would get called, someone would show up, and something would happen. And I just tried to say dispose of properly as being as gray as possible, like I said. So you decide you want to have a burial at sea, you want to have, you know, whatever. It keeps somebody from taking their dead chicken and throwing it out in the front yard to prove a point, to be mean, or for whatever reason. And again, I would like to believe that all chicken owners are good owners. But if that was the case with all pets, you wouldn't have things like SPCA, and you wouldn't have animal shelters if all pet owners were good owners. And I think it's just evident, it's not, that's not always the case. So, that's just where I kind of look at it. I am, I'm all for the way we're doing it. I just want to make sure that we keep most everybody happy with that idea.
Let's look at number five here, which said what we're going to do with it, dead backyard chicken. Can we just remove that whole section from there? Is that the, let me ask you, from that standpoint, because of how they properly might turn out, can we just remove that?
I would recommend just-
Everybody be-
I mean, to be, to be honest, I have a dog that's a hundred and twenty pounds right now. And when he goes in the backyard, if I don't pick it up immediately, my neighbors can smell it. But I do not have a five-page ordinance telling me how to take care of my dog.
It's true.
Chickens, you do not smell them. You don't hear them.
I agree.
They don't make any impact on neighbors whatsoever.
And there's no permit required for a rabbit, and you have to have a rabbit hutch for rabbits. You have to build the structure, you have to put it in. We don't require people to come in, and, I mean, to be honest with you, you're more likely, if you have two pets, you have a rabbit and you have a chicken, if we're, this is what, what, it just, I'm kind of dumbfounded, because a rabbit could actually hurt you, because it can bite you, and it can scratch you.
I can attest that.
A chicken can't do anything to you. The only thing that, that people, I think, can't wrap their mind is they think of it as a farm animal. They really get a rooster? Okay, that's, that's another story, okay? We don't want roosters anyways, but we have to have a permit to have a chicken. We don't have to have a permit to have rabbits, and I'm pretty sure you could have as many as you wanted, rabbit-wise. And trust me, they smell way worse than chickens.
I think the, the-
First off, we're at number five here, right? We're, we're, okay, let me just bring this back. Right now, what we were working on was brought up to remove, was what you did with the dead backyard chicken. So let's, one thing consensus-wise, are we saying get rid of that?
Yes.
So we're going to strike that. Now, we are, we can open up for public comment, or somebody can make a motion. So, that's where we're at right now. I think we've discussed.
We don't, we're here just going to ask staff to come back with a new ordinance, right? We don't really need a-
I don't think we need a new ordinance.
No.
No.
You need to remit, you need an ordinance to remove that section out of the-
You need a new ordinance? Yeah, okay.
We'll have staff come back with a new.
Is that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, and actually, because, I mean, if you read what, basically what it says, it says, "Staff's recommending the program continue unchanged." So if we do it unchanged, and with the exception of taking out number five, that just leaves the permit, and leaves everything else as is.
But since then, we've had the concern, you know, that we have a regulatory system to solve a problem that we don't have. But that's the concern. So, if you, if we want to keep the permit in place, that's, you know, it doesn't have an staff impact, obviously. It's not that big of a deal for us. It's just from a, you know, from a, just a comparison standpoint, we have a full-blown permitting process for problems that just don't happen. So, we can have another year and-
I look at it as Mark said, if we come back to this next year, and it's just the same-
Right.
We can get rid of it.
I agree with that.
I'm not adverse to letting it go one more year and see what happens.
Let me do this since it is an Agenda item. Open up Agenda Item 9 for public comment. Okay, here are no public comment. Back to council. Council wishes here.
I would like to make a motion to accept the staff findings regarding the valuation of the backyard chickens pilot program, along with the removal of Section four thirteen, number five of Section four thirteen. Rest review in the next council meeting.
I'll second it. Hey, Jim, has it, give direction? Okay, there's one. Okay, I have a motion by Councilwoman Gibson, and a second by Vice Mayor Montanaro. Questions? There are none. Grace?
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Breimer? Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Catina?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you. At this time, move on to Agenda Item 10, Discuss Take Action on Ordinance eleven fifty-two.
Ordinance number eleven fifty-two, an ordinance of the city of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending the city board's handbook created by ordinance number eleven oh one, as amended by ordinance numbers eleven thirty-seven and ordinance number eleven thirty-eight, to amend the number of members of the Sustainability Board to include a non-voting member to be appointed by Brevard County, and provide non-voting members of the Sustainability Board not to be considered for purposes of establishing quorum, providing severability and providing an effective date to the first reading ordinance number eleven fifty-two.
Thank you. Good question. The last, I think the first meeting in, I think it was December, or maybe one in November.
Right.
We put somebody on a board who didn't live in Satellite Beach.
Ad hoc committee, yeah.
Okay. Will that make that turn out okay? Okay, so-
We're going to have to revisit that. It's an ad hoc committee, and it's like for four weeks. So we're going to do a whole ordinance change for someone for four weeks. So I was going to call that individual and just ask them to just come to the meetings and participate, but we can't appoint them.
Okay, great. Okay, I just want to make sure we weren't-
Yeah. We started thinking about that, and adding that provision to the ad hoc committee, but, you know, where does that end? You know, we have it for sustainability, because sustainability, that doesn't stop at the borders, but where, you know, when do we stop allowing non-city residents to be on the boards? And so we're concerned with that, of expanding it too much, you know?
Right, I just wanted to make sure we had-
Yeah, and I agree that the ambassador team, we should have vetted that a little bit more, so we apologize for that. But we'll, we'll take care of it.
Questions from council? At this time-
Can I ask you?
Please.
Is the county proposing someone?
We are to the county commissioner and asking him to appoint.
So we're going to ask Kurt Smith to appoint someone?
Yeah.
Further questions? I'm going to open up for public comment, if there is. At this time, open up public comment on Agenda Item 10. Here are no public comment. Back to council.
Motion approved, ordinance number eleven fifty-two on first reading.
Second.
I have a motion by council, and Breimer's second by Councilwoman Gibson. Sorry. Okay, any further discussion?
I just have one other question, too. Where it says, "The non-voting members shall not be considered for the purpose of establishing a quorum," how many non-voting members are there going to be?
Right now, we have one, which is Dylan Hanson, because he's a non-citizen of the state or the country. So he can't vote, you know, so that, so we, but we added him as an expertise person, but he can't vote in the, in the board, on the board.
I guess where I'm going with this is, we're now, we're going to have Dylan, we're going to have a person from the county. How many ultimately could we end up having?
We have seven. Yeah, we just have those two.
Well, I'm saying, we have two voting non-members right now.
That's correct.
How many more non-voting members could we ultimately have?
That's it. That's all we have.
Okay.
Yeah, because everybody else is either a primary or alternate, yeah.
Okay, all right. I just want to make sure we don't have-
And we just wanted to make sure that they couldn't, that they couldn't, we wanted to make sure that they were non-voting, and couldn't swing the majority, especially, you know, because they're not residents.
Right.
I kind of got that indirectly, because it says both positions, so I'm assuming that's two.
Right.
Both.
Yeah, so we created two, with the environmental expertise, and then the county appointment. And really, it was, the environmental expertise was really geared towards that particular person. So, you know, if that particular person ever leaves, we probably won't ever have to do, you know, appoint that.
Or, Grace?
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Catina?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item eleven, which is Appointment to Boards. I believe we have one reappointment, Sampson Island Working Board.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Sal Florisella to a primary member seat, turn amending one-three, two thousand twenty-one.
Second? I have a motion by Vice Mayor Montanaro, second by Councilman Osmer. Further discussions? Grace?
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Catina?
Yes, motion passes. And that's it. Is there one more? Next one, next meeting? Agenda Item twelve, the agenda proposed for our next meeting on January seventeenth. Please take a look at it. If there's other things you would like, please get with our city manager.
Before you adjourn, following up on the Gersh fence issue, that at the last meeting, I indicated that Mr. Repider was going to provide me with his quote-unquote "offer," or whatever, or response to my telephone call with him, and that came in after the last meeting. Basically, there is no indication in the "offer" quote-unquote as to when the fence would be moved. He basically wants to have his clients meet with staff regarding their intent, and the city's interpretation of their intent to do things seaward of their current fence, the property that's east of Beach, and they are tying that all in together. I know that the council at the last meeting, or at the meeting on which the vote was taken, that council was more interested in getting the fence resolved and not tying things together, so. But I, but that was the offer that was made, and I need to convey that to you, so I guess I just need direction from you.
Any question on that?
Sure.
It's two different, why, I know they probably want to tie it together. Why would I want to tie it together? I mean, I'm just saying, one issue doesn't have anything to do with the other. And I, and my feeling is, when that ever happens up here, nothing ever goes right. So my feeling is, the fence is an issue. What he does east of that line is another issue. And a lot of that, what happens east of that line, we don't control.
Correct. And I will say, I talked to Courtney about this too, and she indicated that there have been at least two or three times, I guess, John's been under oath, basically saying what they can and can't do anyway, so.
Do you just read the deposition?
My thing is, this thing has gone on forever. The fence is wrong. Correct the fence. That's it.
That's fine. I just had to bring it to you.
And I don't mean to step on it, but consensus here?
Yes.
I agree.
I felt it was very important that this city council not be involved in anything that facilitates the construction of anything behind the townhomes, so that, you know, if they come in, they have to comply with the permitting standards and the staff, and that there's been no special concessions that would allow for anymore. And that was, I felt very important that, you know, you keep, you know, stay that line. So, so we, you know, we're recommending that we just move forward with the injunction and just-
Okay.
Is that fine with everyone here? Yep. Please, thank you.
I just have one real quick. Councilman Osmer wanted to add the TPO to the calendars, and we're going to add the Florida League of Cities conferences to the calendar. So if there's any other common meetings that you attend that would be helpful for you to have on the calendar, can you let us know, so when we do that, we'll add those to, for you? I know a lot of you depend on it, so if there's a reoccurring meeting that you're required to be at all the time, we'll stick it on here for you.
So, get with Courtney here, phrase on that, or whatever you need on there.
I appreciate it. As you see, I'm taking my calendar with me, so I have that, and you're right, I do rely to that a lot, so.
Yeah, so we'll add, we'll start adding some more stuff to it, make it better for you.
Any further business?
Can we, can we get this calendar email to us?
Sure.
Because it'd be easier to keep it in a file and an email.
Okay.
You know, to be able to refer back to it than ripping it out.
Why don't you get us your meeting stuff that you want us to add to it, and then we'll make it, and send you a draft, and if that's okay with everybody, then we'll just get on that schedule, so when we change it, we'll send it over to you.
Perfect.
I think what I'll do is ask Julie, when events come up I need to be at, just to put me on it. And, yeah.
Okay.
Is there any, any further business before council? Can I have any, everybody? Minutes adjourned.